Want to call the meeting to order, please. If everybody would stand for the pledge allegiance. I guess Alex, do you want to do our roll call?
Here.
Here?
Here? Here. And we have a quorum. I need to get a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I need to get a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve, well, I'm sorry, I forgot Vanessa's name is Vanessa's name spelled wrong in the, yeah, there's it's missing an A. And the present part, present. Vanessa has an A on the end of it. I don't know. But I'll approve it with an A on the end of it, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, the previous council meeting minutes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, new business, we have, we need to appoint Megan Britt to the redevelopment commission as the non-voting advisor for the Mount Vernon School Corporation. I don't know, is she here? No? Okay, well, we officially appoint her then for the non-advisor, non-voting advisor.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think we do.
I think we just acknowledge it, it's the schools, the school board's involvement by statute.
Yeah. Next, we have Landworks Engineering to present an update on the landmark park improvement plan for Fort Valdez.
We always have a problem with that microphone. That's a little better. My name is Ben Hool, I'm a civil engineer and owner of Landworks Engineering. And just coming to give you guys an update on the kind of result of what we did, came before you, a little over a year ago now, I think, of what we did with FAI and the redevelopment commission on Landmark Park and the master plan thereof. With me today also is Carrie Van Vliemen and Eric from Prince Alexander. And they'll be kind of coming up and back with me as we go through the presentation. All right, there we go. All right, Landmark Park Master Plan, so today we'll go through a couple of things. We'll try not to take up too much of your time, it's seven degrees and falling outside. And there's supposedly a game starting in about 25 minutes. So we'll go over a little bit about the process that we went through and that we went through with FAI and the stakeholders as well. The public engagement that we went through from there, and then the outcomes that came out of that. Both things that kind of changed our minds and some of the stakeholders' minds, and then also the priorities that came out of that as well, that were identified through that process with the public. From there, we have kind of an estimated cost, very back of the napkin and very conservative as high is how I'll put that, for the estimated costs there, just because of the unknowns that are associated with it at this point. And then we've also added some pieces and parts here about some potential funding sources, along with maintenance costs and some potential grants, and kind of how those all work a little bit, just kind of to outline some potential next steps. All right, as far as the process is concerned, review of existing information was kind of the first step. So we met with Heath, we met with Joe, we looked over the local and regional trail plans that were in existence. We looked over some prior parks master plan information. We got some background information as far as utilities were concerned and that sort of thing. And just hit the back button, there you go. And then we also identified all the monuments and the plaques that existed there and kind of, both when they were put in there and what they were there for, as well as identifying, hey, this one's for a tree, then the tree doesn't exist anymore, and maybe we should replace that, those kinds of things. From there, we went on to kind of getting some stakeholder input, we wanted to kind of get the feel for the surrounding neighbors, so we invited every neighbor of the park, direct neighbor across the street, that kind of thing. And we met them at the church, we also invited FAI members and redevelopment council members as well to come down, and kind of had just some schematic ideas up on a board and had people come up and put some colors on, yes, I like this, no, I don't like that, here's what I do like about that, and kind of as kind of a baseline to start from. We took that input and formulated a couple of ideas and concepts from that, and then we kind of put that back out there through some public input. We had a social media survey, we had a survey that we did, and we actually were at the Fourth of July Summer Fest as well, and had people as they walked by, kind of scan it with their phone and go through and do the survey real quick. Ended up with 200 responses to that online survey of way people use the park now and the way that they would like to use in the future, and improvements that they would like to see there. So we took that information, kind of circled back around with the stakeholders, and the information that we got from the public input, some of it was a little bit surprising. We knew that we would get a lot of people saying, we want a pool or a splash pad, which, you know, was kind of a non-starter a little bit for this kind of a peaceful park that we wanted to keep a little bit traditional. But at the same point, there were a lot of people who said, you know, I use that park every day. Neighbors or people who walk through it, and I go to the playground, I take my kids over there. It's a nice little area that I can go and I don't have to deal with driving over to Memorial Park or that sort of thing, and then we can just walk there and walk back. So improving the playground actually became much more of a priority than we thought it was going to be in the first place. So those kinds of things, also not necessarily disturbing the large open area, that was one of the things that was identified, being able to still use that kind of moving into the future, whether it's people to play pickup soccer, football, frisbee, or just out there, you know, running with their dog or that kind of thing as well. So even if we're going to have a, you know, a covered stage out there, having that not be so obtrusive to the daily use of that big open space. So based on all that information, we refined some options, developed some cost estimates and phasing, and presented that back to the stakeholders, and then also presented that back to the redevelopment commission. Go ahead. So some of the key takeaways that we got from the public engagement, again, over 200 responses. Most currently visit Landmark Park at least one time per month, and a lot of them utilize it for the events. So it's obviously 83% used it for events like Cammy's Cause, Winter Fest, Summer Fest, those kinds of things. Particular interest in summer concerts, that was a huge one from when that was done a few years ago, pre-COVID, and would love to see it come back. Farmers markets, community events, having spaces where you can really kind of sit and contemplate as well, kind of where the trees are. Those, that was a very important thing to kind of keep it a little bit quieter, a little bit more contemplative. Being able to potentially have rental facilities, whether that's a shelter or the stage, something with restrooms so that they can utilize that for the rental facility as well. We talked about a water feature, that was highly desirable as well, but balancing that out with something that maybe is not as easy to clog or plug or have a two or three-year-old get in and, you know, splash around kind of thing, from a safety perspective. So something much more like a bubbler, almost that kind of thing, where you get kind of the sound and it adds to the contemplative experience, but not necessarily to your insurance liability. Connectivity to existing and future pedestrian pathways and trails, updated signage, some other items like that as well. So this then led us to the priorities that we identified. Enhancing the safety is definitely a big priority. Maintaining line of sight as there are families kind of moving around the park. So if you're there for a concert, being able to see your child going to the bathroom or going to the playground kind of thing. And also having not only lighting, but also potentially adding to the cameras that were put out there from a security perspective and that sort of thing as well. Maintaining a peaceful and reflective space, we've talked about a little bit. One of the items we identified out there, there's a Veterans Memorial that's out there currently. It's got a light on it, but it's broken, probably hasn't worked, you know, for years at this point. It also does not have a bench or anywhere to sit near it, you'd have to go over to the broken benches that are kind of around the planter slash former fountain. Improving distinguishing spaces, so essentially before the gazebo gets so bad that it's going to be a lost cause, improving that, making sure that it's still around and still usable and still in addition to the space. And then the Veterans Memorial, potentially taking the one that's already there and making it a part of a bubbler and a centerpiece that would then have spaces where you can sit and reflect. Adding some amenities, you can see the picture of the existing playground there, probably circa 1970s-ish equipment, and being able to update those to something maybe both a little safer and maybe a little bit more fun, a little bit more nature-oriented, that kind of thing, to be able to put there and still have something that's usable kind of on a daily basis for those families that do that. Having restrooms, restrooms are not there necessarily to replace having porta-potties or a line of porta-potties during an event. You're never going to be able to build a restroom facility there that's going to be large enough for that. So you're going to have to have a space for those events at some point, but what it can do is provide your accessible restrooms for those events. It can also provide, if somebody's going to come out and rent the shelter, it provides that as an amenity to that. So it gives that as an opportunity as well. Having those with the safety up above, so making sure that they're lockable and potentially automatic lock, so they lock at dusk or something like that as well, pieces and parts like that, just to make Heath's job a little bit easier in trying to manage some of that stuff. We talked about a performance venue as well, again, with the, not only the summer concerts, but opportunities for having a Sunday outdoor church service there, for instance. Opportunities for having a classroom to come out there and have it as a classroom centerpiece. Opportunities for to put on a, you know, play or show or that kind of thing as well. So we're not talking about something where, you know, Dave Matthews Band is coming out to play. We're talking more about a community area that can be utilized by the folks in the community, but also be there for when you have a Cammy's Cause or a Summer Fest, that kind of thing as well. Expand the connectivity and accessibility. This kind of goes in with some of the triggers for the grants later, but improving the bridge that crosses over the waterway there, as well as potentially a walkway or a path along that waterway. There are some opportunities to be able to have that at least potentially partially paid for, because it is along a waterway and because it's already been identified as an area in the previous kind of parks and trails, master plans from the county. Go ahead. So this is the schematic for the improvements to the park after going through several different iterations. You can see kind of first off, starting from the north and we'll head south, you can see the the walkway that kind of goes along the waterway right there. It would also be wide enough to serve as a, an accessible route for a truck to come in and unload equipment potentially for the stage and be able to get out from there. And then you also have the new bridge that's over there as well. You can see the covered stage, the two green patches there are really just schematic, they're not raised, they're not seating necessarily, it's just kind of to show you the direction that the stage is pointed. We talked a lot about the location of the stage in general, and where it should go and what direction it should face and that sort of thing. We landed here for a lot of different reasons, but one of the main ones is the music, as it's coming out from that area then, would be pointed kind of back toward the commercial area and Main Street, as opposed to pointing into the residential areas. So not only do you get the benefit of not having the, you know, super loud music going in the wrong direction, but you also get the benefit of if somebody's walking down Main Street, they can probably hear that and then attracted to it and kind of creates that symbiotic relationship with Main Street that we all know a lot of money has gone into to improve as well. Kind of moving south from there, we have kind of a central plaza area. There is currently a flagpole, the flagpole is obscured by some trees that are out there now, the trees have kind of grown up around it. And it's not really a centerpiece or anything that you can see from any distance anymore. So this kind of creates a plaza around that flagpole to give it some proper respect, and then that plaza is then also a connection point between the restrooms, potentially the shelter, the improved playground area, all of those things kind of centralized in that area, again, for both the line of sight items and to be able to have those next to each other for if you're going to, you know, have it as a rental area. Kind of moving south from there, we have just some improved walkways, improved gazebo, and next to the gazebo where the current planter box is, replacing that with something with the bubbler and the Veterans Memorial right there. And then both up at Church Street and then down at Stat Street, having kind of some entry plazas to be able to tie in as you're coming over from Main Street and really give it kind of a nice front door look. Go ahead. So this is kind of a oblique aerial shot here. Not super detailed, but it gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're talking about as far as kind of the entryway down on the left-hand, bottom left-hand corner, and that kind of leading up and into the plaza with, you can see in the background there, all the way at the top would be the covered stage as well. And I'm going to let Eric come up and talk a little bit about the architecture for the elements coming up. Go ahead, Adam.
Hi, I'm Eric from Prince Alexander, Eric Muelzmann from Prince Alexander Architecture, and thank you for letting us put this presentation together for you. Just a couple of things on the conceptual components that we've got on the screen. Currently, I think Ben did a nice job of talking about where the potential improvements might be located and the reasons therefor. If you would go to the next slide, Adam. We did a lot of, a lot of talking with the different stakeholders and talking about the the style of what any of these components might look like, and we put a lot of different sample images out on the table and did the similar exercise where people kind of voted for this or this or that, depending on what they liked. And generally speaking, what we found was that more of a historical, as opposed to a contemporary look, was more in, more fitting with the, with the environment that we've got over there at the park. A little bit more durable, brick, stone, that sort of thing, as opposed to like a glass steel kind of funky sort of thing. But, but it also does a nice job of tying in with a lot of the vernacular architecture of the, of the town. So take some of that Main Street vibe and connect that part to that architecturally as well as physically. So this would be a sample concept of a covered stage. So as you can see, it's not the scale of it, and as we go through the process, if we move forward with this, we would do a little bit more digging deeper into the specifics of the stage, how big does this really need to be? But essentially what, what this would be would, would accommodate, you know, a four or five-piece band or a small choir, that kind of thing, not a giant trapeze set or anything like that. But, but with that sort of cone shape, it would bring the sound, like Ben mentioned, back towards the town and into the open space, and having the back sort of storage area also helps project that sound towards the front. You can go to the next one, Adam. So, so really just in keeping with that architectural style, kind of a classical look, brick, some nice little cornice details, maybe a little bit of stone coursing, things like that. But really, something that ties all of these pieces together. Maybe some wood if we're doing the shelter for some of the structure, structural elements there as well. I think we've got, I think there's one more? Nope, that was it. So yeah, but basically just a real nice kind of simple brick, historical kind of, kind of vibe, and we can tie that in, we've got some other renderings for the gates with a nice kind of ornamental metal archway like you've done with the alley, those kinds of components that we can take from other structures throughout the city and pull that into the park, so it really feels like it's a part of the city.
All right, I'll talk a little bit about the schematic cost estimate. Again, we went high on this on purpose. I'll tell you the reason, it says a little bit on there, depending on timing, materials, final plan. If you end up phasing this and you do it in two to three phases or something like that, you're going to pay that a little bit more every time, both for the escalation of prices, but you're also going to pay for them to remobilize to get out there to do the different elements, I'm sure you guys are all aware of that with roadway projects and that sort of thing. Same kind of thing here, so we kind of incorporated that into this a little bit as well. And then also not knowing necessarily the full level of finish or how long or where it would be as far as getting all the stuff in, and you know, maybe we'll want to do pavers for a portion of the walkway as opposed to just straight concrete or pieces or parts like that, so we went pretty high on the prices that you see here. So pedestrian walks, the bridges, the playground improvements, about $450,000. Veterans Memorial and gazebo improvements, that would take definitely some research design to come up with kind of that bubbler system that we were talking about. We have a couple of kind of go-bys that we've seen done elsewhere that we would kind of use as a baseline, but that would take a little bit more research and discussions with you all to see what that might need to look like at the end of the day. Performance stage and storage, $700,000. I'd say that's a little high, but I think depending on the size of the stage, like Eric was saying, if we're talking about something for a four, five, you know, six-piece band, that kind of thing, it's probably less than that. If you're talking about something that could handle the size stage that Cammy's Cause had, and you want to get a little bit larger than that, then you're probably more up into this range, five, six, $700,000. Restroom facilities and picnic shelter, again, depending on what style you go with, there are actually prefab restrooms that then you can coat in brick. That would be a little bit cheaper and that sort of thing as well, so it just depends. Park entry gateways, $250,000. So you add all those up and we came up with a total base construction cost of around $2 million. Soft costs, you're talking about design permitting, probably a little bit of piece and parts of utility relocation, and then an escalation clause for depending on when we do it and how long that takes. So we essentially took all of that, kind of combined it all together and said, you know what, if you're going to put a budget together for this, maybe you aim for $3 million if you come in at 2.1, then there's probably a way to get it done, something like that. Go ahead, Adam. This is interesting too, it was funny. We added this in because it's something that we've come across a lot in the work that we do, and a lot we get questions on, and when we were taking a look at kind of comparative parks and how much they cost recently, this was also something that was incorporated into that, and something you guys should definitely be aware of kind of moving forward. So these are kind of estimated maintenance costs based on what we're talking about. So these are annual, expected annual maintenance costs for these items. So paved trails, you're talking about about $2,000 per mile. Unpaved trails, you're talking about $5,000 per mile. The difference there is the unpaved trails, you're probably redoing with gravel once every two to three years. So there are a lot more to maintain as opposed to the paved trails, which you would redo maybe every 20 years-ish. Picnic shelters, $3,000, really that's, you know, every couple of years getting a paint job done. If there's electrical work, if the roof needs to be replaced, you know, after 10 or 15 years, that sort of thing. Multi-use fields, $10,000, most of that is for, you know, mowing and just keeping up with the regular maintenance that you guys probably already do on that. Playgrounds, about $25,000, that's essentially helping to put aside if you're doing mulch bed and redo the mulch bed, or for ongoing maintenance if it's a, the poured-in-place kind of softer surface as well. And whether it's painting or safety issues that you have to replace things every once in a while, that kind of thing as well. Performance venues and amphitheaters, about $7,000. Again, you're talking about paint, you're talking about being able to save for replacing the roof, potential, you know, electrical improvements, that sort of thing as you move forward with that too. So this kind of just gives you a general idea of what it may or may not cost for the maintenance of the types of improvements that we're talking about, and kind of moving forward what that might look like. Go ahead, Adam. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie now, and she'll talk a little bit about the potential local funding sources.
Thanks, Ben. Hi, I'm Carrie Van Vliemen, I'm a landscape architect with Landworks Engineering, and I have some previous experience with park master planning and park system master planning through the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. So I'll go quickly through the local funding sources, as I'm sure you guys are probably fairly familiar with these. You know, funding for parks can come from a general fund, primarily coming from property taxes or other funds that are allocated by elected officials through municipal bonds, which as I'm sure you all know are borrowed funds that are repaid through residential taxes and can be approved by local officials or through ballot measures. Through business improvement districts or TIF funding, which are legally established areas that provide for special taxes or fees that contribute to the funding of parks and special enhancement areas. Through zoning strategies like park impact fees, through revenue generating opportunities like your festivals that you hold throughout the year, rental revenue program fees, that type of thing. Special events, concessions and vending that you may be holding within the parks, and through private donations and endowments. Next slide, please, Adam. I think one of the things that I want to specifically address is the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And that is a matching assistant program that is offered through the Department of Natural Resources. It provides a grant for up to 50% of the cost of land acquisition, development of outdoor recreation sites. And this is a fund that if you apply for and accept the Land and Water Conservation Funding, it it makes the land in perpetuity for outdoor recreation. So it's it's kind of a commitment. It's something that you have to, you know, be be aware that you would not be able to sell the land or make that land available for other uses at any at any time. It's a minimum of $250,000, a maximum of $1 million, which they just recently increased. It requires a five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which has to be adopted by a park board. And the park board can cannot be a town council. It cannot be any other municipal body. It has to be a specific body of people who are there in in the interest of adopting the interest of parks. There are also other programs, the Indiana Trails Program, which is also administered by the Department of Natural Resources. That's also a match funding program for 20%. There's the Next Level Trails Program, which connects neighborhoods, cities, towns through pedestrian and bikeways. And that's also a 20% match. So these are all potential funding sources for future investments in your parks. And I want to go ahead and open it up to questions.
Two problems for the application deadline by August first.
That would be the park board.
Our board, so we'd have to get a park board.
That's correct.
Yeah, so the five-year park master plan through DNR. The deadlines for acceptance of that are November 15th for an initial review, April 15th for a final acceptance. And the park board would have to be in place prior to that April 15th adoption of the park.
And then the August 1st deadline would be to apply for the grant. Some of the the last couple of items that we have on the last sheets show some exemplary project examples that were helped out by the LWCF grants. Profits Town State Park, this is up in Tippecanoe County. They gave $910,000 for acquisition of 114 acres. They developed portions of it with some trails and some overlooks and that sort of thing. But mostly it's in there for as development as a natural area in the future and passive park space. Go ahead, Adam. This is another one. This is in O'Fallon, Illinois. $750,000. You can see this one is much more sports oriented. And they utilized it for, I think, softball complexes and parking and that sort of thing for the development there. 200 acres there, picnic shelters, playgrounds, recreation, sport facilities. Go ahead.
Is for land acquisition?
No. Nope. That's just one of the items that you can use it for. They you can use it for land acquisition. You can also use it for the development or the cost of the materials or the anything having to do with the implementation of the master plan for the parks. And last, this one's Ottawa County, Ohio. This one's a $6 million. Largest single state LWCF grant ever. Acquisition of 357 acres and it was to protect undeveloped land and then save it for outdoor recreation activity later, including campgrounds, picnic areas. The reason that we're kind of showing these items as kind of potentials, the LWCF is probably the lowest hanging fruit for the kind of thing that we're that you're looking at doing here at at Landmark Park. And it's what has been used by municipalities that you drive around Indiana and see what they've done. So you're talking about Fishers, Pendleton, Brownsburg, you're talking about other municipalities like that. They utilize the LWCF grants to be able to go out and get some of that stuff paid for. We're working on a couple of projects right now in Greenwood where they were the initial funding for a lot of it was through the LWCF grants as well. The other thing I'll tell you about it and and one of the reasons why we put in the the maintenance costs and kind of the ongoing costs there. You look around, what has happened probably over the last 10 or 12 years in Indian, greater Indianapolis area is a lot of these towns have gone through and realized, hey, even if we get this grant and we build this thing, we're not going to be able to maintain it. They were much in the same position as you guys are now with, you know, just a handful of people that were really responsible for that maintenance and hardly any funding to be able to do so. So a lot of municipalities have gone through with doing. And it was mentioned as one of the ways to raise money locally, the local ways, is they put in, you know, every new home that goes in donates $150 to the, you know, park impact fee. Very much like a water impact fee, which you guys already collect. There are other municipalities that collect roadway impact fees as well to help pay with that. I know nobody really wants to add a tax, especially on development or developers that are coming in and trying to improve your area. But this is for their long-term benefit as well as the long-term benefit of the town. So it's just another thing to take into kind of consideration as you're talking through what it would take to really maintain it moving forward. Yep, absolutely. You guys, any other questions for us while we're here?
They might be smaller than Portland.
Yeah.
They got some kind of grant, I'm not sure.
The other
How they afforded it.
Yeah, we can look that one up and see.
Yeah, jail bill.
Yeah. The other thing I'll tell you, too, is the the grants that we listed there are kind of the low-hanging group grants and the ones from the state and that sort of thing. There are private grants and and whether that be something like from the Lilly Foundation or there are for accessible playgrounds, there are grants that are associated with that. All of those things are very good and worthwhile and in probably pursuing. But you're talking about, you know, the the effort to go into that and you'll probably get 20 or $30,000 out of those kind of things. As opposed to, you know, half a million kind of thing. So so we listed the ones that we thought were probably the major ones that could go a long way to getting you to what you're talking about. But if you were to kind of break it off a little bit and say, okay, I just want to go ahead and let's do what we can to improve the playground right now. There are probably some pieces and parts there of that that we could go after some grants as far as that was concerned, too.
Excuse me, the matching funds that would need to be put up by the town. Those can come from donations of land or materials or even even maintenance contracts. So that 50% match that the town would need to come up with for for that grant can come from a lot of different sources. It doesn't just.
Yeah, as we were going through that, one of the things that occurred to me was really the the park was relatively donated by the school district. If you put a value to that donation, there's a potential that that could go toward your matching funds for the grant. There. So there are pieces and parts like that to to consider as you're going into it, too. We are not grant writers. Right, right? I know FAI has been looking into some grant writers as potential as well. But we would definitely help with kind of the priorities behind it. And we've dealt with this enough with the state that we kind of know what they look for if you're if their one's going into the state.
I think fortunately with the grant writing, the RDC could probably cover something like that since it's in the TIF district, right?
Do you know how they could 6 million if the maximum is a million? Did they break it up by year or by lifetime or something?
On the the Ohio one, they got 6 million for the 350 acres. I I also think that that $1 million is a is a state limit for Indiana for the LWCF grants. So it's it's potentially, they probably did that in Ohio with some special legislation to be able to make that happen for something that large.
What are the, what's the likelihood that we will get that grant? It's not something that you just are given because you apply for it, right?
That's that's correct, yes. It's no, it's it's not something that you're just given because you apply for it or because you have a five-year Parks Master Plan. You do have to apply for it. You do have to come up with the matching funds. And it it has to be a project that is appealing to to the Department of Natural Resources, so. But outdoor recreation in general is is appealing.
And with Fortville in particular, if you were to establish a park board, this is not something that you've asked for before. It's something that I think is relatively sorely needed for the area and Fortville in general. And so I mean, you have more experience than I do, but I would think that it would be something that would go over pretty well.
I guess the question just comes down, do we want a Parks Board or not? I don't know. I don't know what the pros and cons are about having a Parks Board.
That's probably what we need to discuss and find out, I guess, what the pros and cons are of having a Parks Board. And I think we had one at one time and it got dismantled. I don't, how long was it up, Joe? How long? Yeah. It's been a long time ago, but how long were you go, how long was the Parks Board intact? Do you remember? Yeah, well, how long was it? How many years did it stay? And why was it disbanded? You don't, were you on it? Oh.
Well, I would also add that if a Parks Board is to be created, it's it's in the town's interest for them to have a a set out set of what am I trying to say?
Yeah, so that that is is set out from the beginning so that it is not just creating a park board in order to adopt this plan and in order to get this grant.
Right. I understand. It needs to be for a a five-year plan at least.
Right.
Yeah.
The Parks Board can also be appointed, the members of the Parks Board, you can have them, much like you appoint representatives to the RDC and you accepted one today. You it would be very similar to that where you could appoint them in that kind of fashion.
With with the exception of, it's a separate governmental entity and you do have appointments, the council would have appointment appointments to the board, but the council would not have control over the board, either on what the board did or the purse strings of the board. You have some control by nature of the board's going to need funding from the town. And, you know, so when you go through the budget process, there would be park line items and park board, so there's interaction there. In my experience, park boards disbanded typically for political reasons that the executive body, you guys, don't like what's going on in the parks and and don't like the way that the park board is managing the parks or running their budget or whatnot. And so there's a statutory process to disband the board and take control back. But it's another layer, it is a distinct and separate layer of government with the ability to tax and curd debt seek grants. So not necessarily a bad thing, but things to consider. Because every community is different and it may be the right thing for Fortville now. Maybe not, but certainly something to to discuss and think about.
Are we the size of a town that would require a park board, do you think? I mean, in what you know, I mean, based on
You know, Pendleton's had a park board forever. Probably not forever, but for a long, long time. And in my time that I spent up there, that park board and and the town council seemed to get along by and large pretty well. There were disputes here and there, always about finances, always about park projects, incurring debt and things like that, but they seem to work things out. I can think of a couple of other communities that like Fortville disbanded their park board just because the the town council just did not like the direction that the park board was going. Would the park board members in those particular situations were not open to the suggestions of the council that were coming from the public and the constituents of the council. And they couldn't get past that. And so they they understanding that they would forego some opportunities like the conservation funding. In the overall picture, having control of the parks by a body that that council felt was more responsible to the constituency was the right move for that town. So it's really town specific. I think that Fortville certainly is of a size and that the importance of the parks here, the number of parks here, the opportunity for parks here, that that it could sustain that. It's just whether it's the right move for Fortville.
So if the parks takes on debt, does that count against the town's maximum debt levy?
This is more of a, I'm, you're asking me more of a buzz question. It impacts it. I don't know the degree to it, but I can talk to Buzz and Dennis Otten and kind of get some of those questions. Or if you have other questions, email them to me and then maybe I can get you some answers as the council's considering whether to to pursue a park board.
Yeah, I think we need to take a close look at it before we make a decision like that. Especially on the financial side.
I think the requirement from DNR is that the a park board consists of four people at a minimum and that those people cannot all be from the same political party.
That's interesting.
There is actually in, if you guys, there is a recorded part of your ordinance where they disbanded the park board. And I've gotten a copy of that and read it. It definitely sounded like it was politically motivated from that. Yeah, yeah, I think Alex's comments there definitely probably applied to that particular item, but.
Well, I appreciate the information's all good. So I think this is something that we need to just dig into and see where where we can go with this, really.
So I think that about some of the the goals of the state and communities within the state and quality of life, quality of places, which are real kind of buzzwords or buzz terms right now. And I think that's what this is all about. I think that considering everything that this community is doing for downtown Fortville, it's natural to consider that park as the quality of place and life. And so it's probably going to be a little bit challenging to figure out all the pieces of how to make this work, but I think it's worth going through that exercise.
I agree. Yeah. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. We appreciate the time.
Appreciate the good information. So we'll get we'll get back to you guys and get some answers. Thank you. Okay, um, there's no old business, so we'll go to department, Joe.
Yep, just a couple of quick items. It is cold out there. We'd let you know that our salt storage or our stock is well stocked, so we've got plenty of salt. In fact, we need to use some of it up before the shears up because we're obligated to purchase more and bring some more in according to the, you know, the contract we've got set up with with the state for purchasing. So we're we're trying to keep as much salt down as we can to take care of the issue without overdoing it. The temperatures get down and the single-digit salt doesn't work very well. We do have a separate barn that we mix salt and sand together. When when it gets real slick, packed down and it's so cold that the salt's not working, it does at least help give it a little bit of traction. So until it starts to warm up or get some sun on, it'll start to melt. So we're keeping a close eye on that and trying to keep the intersections and roads safe as we can. And I've not heard of any accidents over the last few days. So I think the guys are doing a pretty good job on that. The cold temps, knock on wood, we've not had any water main issues or water services freeze up. We've been pretty fortunate there. With the exception of the new water treatment plant, we've had two of the rooms out there where the fluoride and the chlorine rooms both froze up. And then the heat is not working in the labs. So they're working on that and hopefully we'll get those issues resolved very quickly. And the last thing I've got this evening is since Ricky retired at the first of the year, with the first of January, anyway, we will be advertising and trying to get a replacement for that position. And that's all I have unless you've got something for me. And that's all I have unless you've got something for me.
Did they give you a timeframe on getting the repairs done?
No, I I was uh told that they were gonna have a large crew of professionals out there working on everything today. And it turns out there was um one of the engineers showed up as well. And uh I guess there was a uh miscommunication. They were traveling today to get there, so it'll probably be tomorrow and the next day. So they must be coming in from out of state.
Plant is running though.
The plant is running, yes.
I have a question. On the temporary ADA ramp, who's responsible to remove the snow off of it? I've noticed people are using it. You can see the footprints. Is it Endot or is it is it our responsibility to keep that temporary ramp salted?
Um, they're probably salting the roads and and taking care of that. We've got a resolution that uh makes anything within the right away, the sidewalks and the grass area and everything up to the curb, the property owner is supposed to maintain that and keep that opened up.
So are we are we supposed to salt it or are they?
As a property owner adjacent to the roadway, yeah, it would be up to the.
No, I'm talking about the temporary crossing that they.
Across the street.
Yeah, it's full.
That it's it's no cover. Yeah, that that would be either Endot or the contractor. And if it's no covered, I will relay that. I have a meeting with them tomorrow, so I'll make sure that they're aware of that.
Thank you.
Nothing for me tonight unless you have any questions on anything.
Evening council, Heath is the parks manager. Um, just very quickly, wanted to put the date out there, Saturday, July sixth for SummerFest. Um, I will come back with the actual um event request form that you guys can look at and file, but just keep that in mind uh that Saturday for Saturday after July fourth. Um, the only other thing I've got is, I believe Alex has it, we've kind of gone back and forth a little bit with the contract with the Boys and Girls Club. I think they're right now looking to maybe start March first. We're still working on the final ins and outs of that contract uh shaping up. Hopefully here in the next week or so, we should have that ready to go. Um, they're excited. Uh, I think uh they've got some community involvement already. Um, people are excited to to be able to have something back in over the community center with the Boys and Girls Club. So that's all I've got unless anybody's got questions for me.
When did they finally reach out to you?
Uh, we've been kind of back and forth since they came and visited, I want to say somewhere around end of October. Um, they've been on a couple of site visits. They had their national vice president out taking a look at it as well. Um, it's just kind of the holidays. It's kind of been hit or miss as far as communication. Um, but they had told me originally that they knew that they wouldn't be looking. They want to put together a marketing plan. At a time, make sure that they have enough enrollment to uh you know, making sure that they're they're able to sustain what they want to do over there. Um, and it sounds like they're kind of working through the process of that now. It's again, it's just on our end. It's a matter of working out the contract details and and making sure that uh it's something that we both agree to um from a town perspective and from a Boys and Girls Club perspective. Um and then hopefully uh they're like I said, they're looking March first, they may push that to the beginning of next year. I'm not one hundred percent positive yet. The contract shows March first, I think is what they're hoping for from a marketing perspective.
I think they they sent us the first draft of the contract in December. We kicked back our revisions a week or two later.
Yep.
They've got it to us. And like Heath said, I think we'll have that button up in the next few days to a week.
Now, is this agreement gonna have the proposed fees?
Yes.
Okay, because I know that Heath and I have been talking too. We need to go back and begin with the uh the our fee schedule and the uh facilities rental agreement, the way it's written, there's a few things in there we need to amend already. So so that needs to be included.
The three of us talk before we ship back the final version and make sure that's all consistent.
For sure. That's all I've got. Unless anybody's got any questions for me.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, a long time ago, when I first came to Fortville, um all of our events were in a publication festival guide. I know FAI had done it. Do you still do that?
Yeah, we still get all that stuff out. Um, there's a deadline for it. And I actually think this last year got sent to Natalie and got overlooked because she wasn't working here again. Um, but I know there was uh I believe SummerFest was in there and I thought WinterFest was too. It may not have gotten in.
I don't think it was. I picked it up at the airport last time I was there and it just made me think that it'd be.
Yeah, I know we've got on my front here. We've got the twenty twenty-three festival, guys. I'll have to take a look at it, but it's uh it's a, I want to say a two hundred and fifty dollar fee maybe. Which we've done it every year, but again, I think it got sent to Natalie this past year because she was kind of doing the events and then obviously moved on. So it didn't really register the.
I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar.
Yep. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Heath. Thanks.
Patrick.
Okay, uh first and foremost, I want to introduce Chase Simpson. He's in the back of the room. He's our newest Fortville police officer. Full time. Come on up. Uh, he comes from us from I U P U I Police Department. He already had the academy. Um, he came highly recommended from his training lieutenant, which is Robert Holland's brother. Um, nothing but good things to say about him and uh we're excited to have him. So he's he's ready to hit the road. He's he's qualified and currently in his FTO process.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, glad to have you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, let's see. I want to thank the Streets Department, Parks Department, maintaining the roads. Um, we didn't have any accidents over this weather event, so that's good. Uh, we appreciate them putting in the hours and the time and doing all that because it really makes our job a little bit easier. Instead of cleaning up, they've already they've already taken care of that for us. So we're not doing the reports. Um, probably the I need council approval for ammo. Um, prices again are increasing this year. I don't have a quote yet, but I plan on getting that um for the next council meeting. Um, it'll be in within my budget numbers, but ammo is constantly increasing, so it'll be above Joe and I's spending limits. Um, so I'll bring you a quote for the next meeting and and request approval for that. And other than that, um my mother has fallen ill. I'll be out at the end of the month. She has to have surgery. I'll be out for a little bit. My sister's coming in from Dallas, so we're gonna kind of hop back and forth to see who takes care of her. And in February twenty-second through the twenty-seventh, uh I pushed back my ice fishing trip. So hopefully as long as my mother's well, I'll be able to go ice fishing. So I'll be out then also. And then if you have questions for me, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Good. Uh, Missy's not here. Alex, do you have anything for us?
Um, wasn't here last time, so Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome, Vanessa. I look forward to working with you. Never hesitate to call, email or whatever.
Public comments?
Good evening, Bob Starett, resident. I got a couple of things. Um, so I'm also on the tourism board. And there's been a lot of talk about the eclipse coming up on April eighth. Any plans for Fortville to do anything? It's a I know there are there are big concerns that I keep hearing about as far as traffic and this, you know, it's gonna be full blackout for almost four minutes and all that. Seems like it'd be a good opportunity for Fortville to do some kind of an event, but I they don't have any ideas. I thought it's something to be thought about now instead of March fifteenth.
I've already bought my, I've already bought two hundred of those solar glasses to give out to the first two hundred people.
That's good.
We're gonna have sidewalk chalk and I'm taking reservations, so I know how many tables are set up outside.
Tourism will have about a thousand pair of those as well. If Fortville wants a couple hundred of them or whatever, you just go onto the website, uh Hancock County Tourism and.
I know Mark has attended a couple seminar about the eclipse because there's several planned events in the area that well, there'll be thousands of people, literally thousands, so um.
What what I keep hearing that we're worried about traffic just coming to a stop.
Yeah.
And you know, I know the schools have already shut down for that day. There's there's gonna be, you know, no school in any of Hancock County as well, as far as I understand, uh which I think is smart. You don't, you know.
We've also got a band playing that day too.
Okay.
We're we've we've started planning.
All right.
So we should make a thing of it.
Yeah.
Well, everybody's thinking.
Well, yeah. But I yeah, in this, I know it's only a few minutes long, but you might as well make a big deal out, but maybe uh you know, I think about sidewalk seating, you know, uh you know, uh Cortonas and uh Taxman. All all the restaurants on Main Street ought to have something outside leading up to it, you know.
I forget what it is, Bob. What's the date? What's the date? I forget.
April eight.
April eighth.
It's the afternoon.
Yeah, it's like three o'clock on Monday.
Yeah, and we're in one of the ideal spots for it. Let's meet. It's uh but.
So um all the police departments, homeland security, emergency management, we've all been working on this for gosh, since last September.
Right.
Um, we've all kind of got a game plan. We're setting up radio channels, bringing in additional officers for the traffic congestion. Obviously, we're within, you know, seven miles of four different major interstates.
Right.
Um, and we're in that prime location, so we are working through that. Um, I think our next meeting is beginning of this month um in February, to kind of work through our our radio talk groups and with they're possibly anticipating some cell towers going down or being too clogged. So we've got to work through that and um but on the law enforcement side of it, we're prepared minus getting ourselves some cool glasses.
Right.
Um, but we've been working with homeland security, emergency management, everybody in the county, hospitals, all that type of stuff. So we're we're ready minus the cool glasses and we're gonna do our best at it.
I heard Fritz has some glasses if you need.
Yeah.
I've got you a hundred.
We gotta get a table first.
But I would say, I would say if you're gonna get solar glasses, you better start ordering now.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because they're gonna run out.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Right now on Amazon.
The Hallmark store over in Greenfield has given them away as well. Uh, maybe with purchase, I'm not really sure how it works, but I know they've got quite a few to give away, so.
So if you come, if you come by, you get a free pair.
Well, since tourism has some, I get a a pair of those. It says tourism on the side of it. Um, the other item I have is uh everybody's aware of, I can't imagine anybody here not being aware that we're losing businesses on Main Street. And over the years, it seems like every once in a while members of the council would pick a project to work on. And it seems like maybe two or three of you might be on a project to figure out how to revive our Main Street. I'm just, you know, I know a lot of it has to do with the property owners themselves, but we need to do something. Um, you know, I remember FAI will remember back in two thousand and eleven, you know, the only activity there was, you know, with a a car wreck happened on Main Street. I mean, there was there was nothing there and we worked really hard to get to this point of two years ago, but it's really going to hell. It really is. Yeah. Libby, you're very aware. I mean, you you're one of the store owners on Main Street. It's there's just so many empty places. And I think that I I don't have the answer. But I think that somebody a lot smarter than me, like all of you, need to come up with an idea of of how to encourage business to move in. Talk to some of the store owners, the the building owners to see if there's something that we can do. You know, we just lost our bakery. I mean, how we kind of saw that coming for a while. Um, but it it's just kind of a shame. And I think that it's, you know, I'm not a big fan of looking at the happenings, but you look at that and it's everybody's concerned right now about what's going on with our Main Street and Broadway. I mean, it's just tough. I understand there's construction going on, but what what they, you know, well, once we get our sidewalks and our new streets, there's not gonna be anything left to shop for. I did. I just think it's a shame that it's getting to this point and we need to talk to whoever we have to to try and figure it out. If if I knew of, I actually talked to one of the building owners and I said, I I know of a restaurant that's looking to relocate, thought maybe Fortville would be a place. He kind of turned me down. That's whatever. Okay, so it's sitting vacant. Good for him, you know, but you know, I think that it's something that really needs your attention, the RDC's attention, whoever. We just need to really kind of work on this. You know, we're we're not gonna have much to drive on those new roads for.
I think once all that construction gets done too, it will be more attractive. Right now, the economy and everything makes it not attractive for anybody. Uh, just like Gil and his property over here, you know, he kind of slowed down on it because of costs and uh interest rates and that sort of thing. So he hasn't started that project and it's, I think it has a lot to do with the economy too, not just the construction, but the construction just makes it more
Sure.
more so and and less convenient.
And I know there are other towns and cities around and this is this is something that couldn't be decided on tonight, but um where the RDC or the council, the town in general helps say to encourage a business to come to town, maybe there's some kind of an uh
incentive.
Tax abatement, incentive, something to help them through their expenses the first year. And I mean, because you're right, walking into town, supposedly it's November before construction is gonna be done. You know, I it may be a little bit early, but bad weather, it's gonna be January. So, you know, who knows? But maybe there are some ways, and this is what you guys have to talk about.
And that would be good too, if we could get the property owners to cooperate in hand and we could work together with.
Sure.
I mean, I think that's a great idea and I think that's a way to get people here.
It needs to be talked about somewhere other than right here. The property owners, you get, you guys are gonna have to get involved with the property owners. The RDC is gonna have to do the same thing.
RDC has been looking at um finding some marketing ways to market the town too. And now that we've got Hart on the over in Greenfield, maybe he'll.
He left.
Yeah, he's yeah, but he's he's in he's in the county now. So I mean, it's there are there are things you could do, but it's hard to find somebody to specifically market the town. But right now, it's a hard sell. It's it's hard sell. I mean, you've, you know, people don't have the expendable cash like they had before either, so it's just, it's tough. And and everybody that wants to start a small business can't get the funding right now um and don't have the funding of their own. So I mean, I have about fifty small businesses I could start if I had the money. You know, I don't have the money, so. But we, you know, obviously the property owners are gonna have a lot to do with this. And that's the majority of what's empty.
Yeah, there's definitely a different feel. I mean, I've been on Main Street through COVID and through the sidewalk construction and um it's it is, it's totally different. We did fine through all that construction and we had no sidewalk out in front. So it has to be the economy. It has to be people. You know, they.
It's an election year.
Money. Oh, yeah.
Nobody knows what's gonna happen.
Sure.
Bad things could happen this year.
But people are talking about it. Um, you know, Joe and I have had lots and Tanya, we've had lots of conversations about what we can do because there's so many things out of our control that that we can't do. Um, and we can't force a property owner to.
As as a property owner and a business owner, I could tell you that the road construction did affect our business when they took out my Oak Street entrance. Our our business dropped ten thousand dollars a week. A week. That's not the economy. When we have customers.
Suppose we fix that, though? How can that not happen when you have construction?
Well, no, they could have reopened it. They could have done phase one A and one B. It's separate phases. Instead of what they did, they just came in and just tore everything out.
So that's done with now.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. That's why the donut shop.
That's not why. That's not solely why. A lot more that went behind. It's not our, that's not our business.
Okay, wait a minute. When uh they knew, okay, you reopened their entrance back up, but they know come April, they're that's all getting torn out again. They can't survive.
What's April?
When the north side of the street gets torn out.
Well, they'll they'll start it before then.
Well, I'd heard it was gonna start this last Monday, but obviously, no, yeah.
But what you're talking about is a is a vigorous pursuit of funding. You said tax abatements and I mean, you know, like the Broadway is a different matter than the Main Street, right? Like the, you know, because the just to separate out the two and maybe kind of bring it, bring it back together again. But but either way, whether it's about properties on Main Street sitting vacant or whether it's about occupied properties on Broadway having trouble with the construction, is there some sort of funding that we could seek out? Can we work together to try to find funding?
Sure.
For town businesses? Is that the idea?
Yeah, and you know, I I I hear comments about the economy, but you drive down Main Street on Friday and Saturday, there's not a parking space left. So evidently, there are still people that want to come. So evidently there are still people that want to come and, and shop and spend some money on Main Street. They're not just there to park their car.
Right.
They're going into what few stores we have or few restaurants.
Yeah. But what they're doing is they're sitting, going to restaurants and sit for hours and they're not going into the little boutiques. And boutiques aren't open at night. So I mean, it's, they're a lot out of our control on that.
It only takes ten minutes to enter the two boutiques that we have, you know? It, it just, I just think that we're, we're in bad shape right now. And, and I, I just really think somebody's attention besides mine needs to happen. I, you know, and, and the happenings.
It would be good to see the, the retail properties on Main Street all occupied.
Sure.
It, it would be good to see it actually flourish and be full and, and to maybe look into why they're sitting vacant for so long.
I think it can be that way again.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know that once this project is done, that those, those small business people that are sitting at home and selling online and stuff will come back out because they can afford to at that point. And they know that the, it will thrive in there again because of the staple restaurants that we have in town. And really that's what drives a lot of that. Um, but I think it will, I think I'm pretty sure that it will come back.
And I guess if it's okay to wait for a year, I, I.
It's never okay to wait, but there is no, that's why I said it's really hard to find the perfect resolution for that.
Perhaps a root cause analysis on our part and an investigation into what we can do to help.
Yeah. I, 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 I've not heard anybody talk about this before now.
And, and Nashville, Indiana, they have marketing dollars because they want to spend money for, we're going to be a destination. Uh, but we don't have a budget in the RDC bid only $2,700. There's not much we can market. It needs to be more like 10, $20,000 a year. And I've been saying that, but it doesn't get.
And I believe the RDC has enough money to put a hundred thousand dollars in there to help pay for the utilities or the rent or whatever for the first year. So if the, it is the economy, if it is the construction, they are not going to go broke in the first year. They, if they have a, a a town behind the, the whole business. I know it's not the town's business to be in business, but it is to help the town. So, you know, it just seems like that's where we ought to be spending some money.
The marketing, because they got to market people. Hey, come visit Corning. We need a budget, a real budget, not a $2,700.
I agree. Cause I saw that.
$8,000 budget to market our town.
Well, Bob, people are talking about it. We are, but it's just not at this table. We're talking amongst ourselves. So we are, we are just as concerned as you are.
It's talking. We have a great town.
We do.
And we, we can't let it go away. We just can't. I know, you know, it just, it just needs to be taken care of somehow, whatever that is. Like I said, there's smarter people than me. I just know I'm concerned. I know there's a, well, I'd rather not look at happenings, but that's where I see a lot of the comments, but they're, alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Case. Um, I'm not a resident of Fortville, but I work here. I work at the credit union. And, um, I work with small business owners. Uh, I want to just jump in some of what I'm hearing, um, about people who are looking to open in Fortville. And, uh, what they're facing kind of similar to what, what Bob is saying. So right now there's no less than three uh, specific businesses that are formed, that are ready to go, that want to open in Fortville, that want to open on Main Street, that would love to be able to find a space. And these are the type of businesses that would draw people from the suburbs and the surrounding areas onto Main Street for shopping and recreation and, and all kinds of stuff. So I can't, obviously they're, they're clients of mine. So I can't divulge information about specifics and stuff like that. But, um, they're out there. And I also know from working with, um, businesses in surrounding areas, there's a small business in Pendleton that we've helped. And one of the things they did when they were looking for their next expansion was they called around. So they called around, they talked to town managers and they were like, hey, what, how, how does this work? Do you have any programs? Is there anything that's going on? And they're opening in Yorktown in two months and Yorktown, uh, the, the kind of the, what drew them to Yorktown was that there's incentive to help them launch through that first year. And as well as, um, Yorktown has like some specific signage requirements and the town is, you know, covering their signage to make it all nice and pretty and how they want it and all that kind of stuff. But, uh, it's cut the cost of their opening in half. And that was enough for them to choose their second location there. And there will be other locations for, for businesses like this. And, um, as people call around and as they decide where they want to put their roots, not saying that Fortville should open the door for, for just, you know, there are the purse or I guess for, for just every type of business that comes in. But if there's strategic intent about driving traffic onto Main Street, and we know that some of these businesses and industries that do that, those would be places that, um, you know, maybe would be a program to approve, you know, helping them get their roots in. That first year of support will go a long way in years two, three, four, five, six, to pay itself back to the town when these businesses are successful. And, uh, it helps these business owners really take that leap. When we're in a time of economic uncertainty and traffic situations and everything like that, it's a scary time to open a business right now. Um, people who are opening businesses right now are very bold and brave to do so. But, um, if there's some sort of program in place, like, like maybe Bob was, like he was talking about, maybe it takes some of the edge off and, and makes them feel like Fortville is a little bit of a safer place to do that. Um, so those are just the kind of things I'm seeing from talking to people who are just registered their first LLC. Or they have a passion and they're trying to turn it into their, to a business or turn it into their, you know, they're quitting their nine to five, that kind of stuff. And those are the conversations we're having right now. So I do think there, um, Fortville has a, is a unique spot right now. Where we have these opportunities to fill these retail spots, um, and do it in a way that isn't just come in and eat and go home, but really spend an afternoon, you know, come out with the kids. We, we go over to, we go over to, to get ice cream and then we'll, we'll walk up and down and, you know, a toy shop or a little bookstore or something like that where I can take my kids to, you know, we, we would frequent all spots like that. So. Those are just some thoughts. Um, again, non-resident, so take it for what it's worth, but I do work here and I, I love Fortville. So we're, we're, uh, you know, my family and I really appreciate all the work that you guys do to make it what it is right now. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks. You, your businesses that you were talking about that are looking for a place, have they contacted the, or?
Some of them have.
Yeah. And what was the response? I mean,
Uh, they're, they're, well, some of them like, they're, they're working through some of it. So, uh, there's a couple that are going to go home base for like the first five, six months, um, do orders online and then they want to open a storefront. Um, some of them are in the early phases. They're more like, um, you know, they're, they're looking for the right size space. So some of the spaces are, are too big or too much money for what it is. Fortville has a, my, this is just my opinion. Uh, we have a tendency to kind of charge, um, you know, Fisher's rent prices for not Fisher's foot traffic. And it really puts a lot of strain. I don't think anyone's getting rich. Um, you know, you, you go up and down the, the main street, you see business owners in there, right? So no one's, no one's cashing in and making all this money hand over fist. The margins are thin. It's tough business right now. And then you're, you see it reflected in like, in the stores that are closing. So I don't know that rent is necessarily the only problem. Uh, traffic and, um, there, there's just a lot of challenges that go in, but, um, I think we can still support and you know, make it an effort to shop locally on Broadway or Maine or wherever it may be, um, and then make it an appealing place to do business.
That's why I was talking to the RD, well, about the marketing part of this. We're not marketing. And I'm afraid by next November, I might be the only business that's days afloat out there because like Ray and I, we have other locations. We have other businesses to cover. Uh, other places don't own, they don't own the property. They, they pay rent and you cut their sales in half. The, the rents are still staying, your fixed costs are still there.
Yeah.
You just have to cut your labor. You don't hire, you don't, you just got to cut way back.
It's tight right now. And, and, and actually, uh, Colleen in the back is someone we've had a conversation with. She, she's a small business owner. Uh, she moved in from South Texas and she used to do a lot of events to support small, you know, support business. And I know we've had like ladies nights in the past and stuff like that. And I think, uh, you know, a budget for those kinds of things or bringing back some of that stuff to really get to pull people in. I don't think Fortville on its own with just, just only Fortville residents can, can support everything. We really need to pull in from surrounding communities to, to really have that, that strength and.
Well, that was our problem this summer is people from Fisher's couldn't get to us.
Yeah.
And they're not going to drive down 300, then go down 950, come up 200 to, uh, eat at a restaurant. I guess my biggest argument is that when you make it difficult in the retail business, people will go somewhere else.
Yeah.
They, it's not like where my other company, they need me. I, I gotta go, go get them.
Sure.
But they don't, my, my customers can go somewhere else. It's a lot easier and convenient. Whenever you make uh, retail inconvenient, you're going to see a drop in business.
Yeah.
This whole project from the very beginning was not even thought about. Uh, making sure that the retail on Broadway stays survive. It was the lowest bid to the, uh, bid and all they did, they did not even, there was a one A phase that they were supposed to do. Complete it, then go to one B and then complete it. They didn't do that. And that's why you saw this, what happened this summer.
So I would just in questioning, how much, um, is this marketing town's responsibility versus say a chamber of commerce that we can't seem to keep together?
A great point. I, that is a great point. And, and, and that's where sometimes people get brought up. Obviously, you know, I'm, I'm involved with FAI. And we feel like what's, what's our role? I mean, we're not a chamber. You know what I mean? So like, we can't, we can't take, we can't shoulder this. We're, we're a volunteer organization, a community organization. Um, and there is a chamber, but how active is it? And how much are the business owners, you know, you know, collaborating with each other? There's a lot of questions. It's a complex issue. Um, I, I appreciate Bob getting up here and kind of just bringing it up as something that maybe can be discussed. I think there's a lot of municipalities around that are that have things like this in place. I don't know what they are or what it, what it looks like. Um, I do think people want to be in Fortville. I will tell you that I, I run into people all the time that want to open up here. I just don't want to see them put their savings into a business just to have it bled out until they, until they close.
Sure.
You know, I want to see, I want to see it thrive. And I think the only way to do that is if Main Street, Broadway, our, our, you know, retail district is, is strong more than just the restaurants. So that's all.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Hello. My name's Colleen Grove and I'm a resident. I, uh, new to Indiana. I just moved here from South Texas. I had a small business in a very similar town as Fortville. Uh, one solution that will help market the town, that could be a win-win for the city and, or for the town and for the, the businesses is we did a market once a month, very similar to Winterfest, where we would close the street for about five hours, once a month, like a Saturday. Insistently saying with the first or whatever Saturday of the month, uh, getting vendors in there, you're charging $50 or whatever a space for a vendor. You can have all kinds of arts and craft people. You can have food vendors. Uh, that is money that comes directly to the town. Uh, the one thing that they would have to do, I'm sure that there's some kind of rule because we did have to hire police officers. So uh, maybe off duty officers would like to take on a little extra time. So it could be a win-win. I know that the businesses here, uh, when we do things here, it's really a shot in the arm for them because they get the foot traffic they normally wouldn't have. And something like this, uh, from where I have been, there were small businesses that needed that to make their rent every month. Um, I fortunately was not one of those people, uh, but there were many, many that, that if they didn't have that event, they would have to close their business. So it could be a win for the city. They could make all that money once a month. And it would bring people out here. So it's another thing that you can consider. Uh, I think it could be good for everyone.
Sure. That's a good idea.
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Council comments?
I don't have any.
You're wrong.
Nope, not for me.
Uh, I, I had a, a shout out to give to Jennifer Hancock, who runs the nonprofit Hancock Wildlife Rescue and Rehabilitation. Um, Jen goes and rescues bats and squirrels and things out of people's houses, uh, for free, which is a really incredible service to our town. And she took a bat out of my house over the weekend and I was very moved by this because then I could finally stop screaming, get some sleep. So, um, she, she's got a Facebook page, which is great. I think it's, it's the same name Hancock Wildlife Rescue and Rehabilitation. She, uh, puts up photos of the little bats and gives them names and things. And, uh, she's actually here. She's sitting over there because I told her I was going to do a shout out. So if you think you might have bats, if your house is full of holes like mine is, um, you go, go say hi, you know? And, um, you know, she came by over the weekend. It was really great. I, I thought for sure I would have bat problems until yesterday, but, but it was awesome. So thank you, Jen.
I looked in a home in, in Pendleton that, uh, at least 50 bats a night flew out of the, of the attic and I moved, I moved.
They didn't.
No, I don't, I don't have any coming.
Okay. I need a motion to approve assigned vouchers.
We'll make a motion to approve assigned vouchers.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:55.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I had a couple. All right. In the house.